At the casino? That's my last question, I forgot.
That's, that was the other option that, um, that we're looking into on the, on the insurance.
Let's call for the vote.
And just for, um, just for clarification, this is the vote to approve the resolution appointing Jackson Tenfingers to the position of acting general manager for the Prairie Wind Casino. James Cross. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
No.
Bo Little White Man. Lio Weston.
No.
Beef Randall.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman. Craig Dillon. Garfield Steele.
No.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little. David Poyer.
Yes.
Anna Halverson, no. Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Bo, you are not voting, would you like to vote? No, thank you.
Nine yes, eleven no. Motion failed.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion to temporarily appoint, uh, Brandon Bressino to fill in the duties as acting until such time we fill the position and.
Okay.
My motion.
Okay, so a motion by Councilman Greenwall, second by Councilman Weston. Secretary, call for the vote.
James Cross.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
No.
Bo Little White Man. Lio Weston.
Yes.
Beef Randall.
No.
Tyler Londonman. Craig Dillon. Garfield Steele.
No.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Troy Little. David Poyer. Anna Halverson, no. Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
No.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
George Dreamer Junior.
My motion is to appoint Julie. Six yes, thirteen no, one not voting, motion failed. Councilman Standing Soldier.
So without a general manager, what are we gonna do, shut it down?
Well, you have five candidates up here, but there's no due diligence.
Right, or there's nothing, we can't do that.
Councilman Ghost Bear.
Chair, I'll make a motion to temporarily shut down the casino. In the meantime, I want Steve Gunn to look at all the applicants and do the due diligence ASAP. And we go through the candidates either on Friday or Monday. Out the, is he online? So I wanna know how, how soon you can get them done. Brad, how long does it usually take? Well, that would be my motion, definitely, cuz, uh, I, uh, council seems that none, none, either one wasn't capable of doing a job, so I don't know why we wanna, um, keep it open and hurt the casino more.
Okay, so you got a motion by Councilman Ghost Bear for a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, second?
Not, not second, but in the past, we never did due diligence on those applicants. We, I, I've never, I never heard that. Yeah, we just select them and they, they, we did submit it to resumes, that was good enough, and then, then we, um, did a selection, and now all they had to do was adhere to the, um, gaming, uh, uh, laws, get a gaming license, and that was it. There was no, there was no due diligence on them.
Question.
Ca- Councilman Spotted Bear, if, if then.
Thank you, Chair, a few questions to the motion maker, uh, or to Rayanne. Would this be for the due diligence, would, if, if a due diligence is required, or maybe not, but would it be better that the legal office do, do that portion rather than Steve Gunn in order to expedite that if, if a due diligence is required? And if you're suggesting that the casino be shut down in regards to the money that's in the cash cage, or any, um, money matters in there, uh, what's the plan to secure the, secure that facility? Do we need law enforcement out there immediately? Um, what's the plan for that? If we're gonna make a decision like that?
Well, they got, cuz they got security out there, we have security too, I mean, we could, we got the police force. I don't know, that's, I guess that's up for task force, but, um, I'm not trying to complicate this, I'm just trying to, we've, we ran the motion twice and counsel don't want either one, so.
Uh, Sonia.
Is it, uh, possible maybe to get these, uh, what is it, five or six applicants, Stacy?
Five.
Five applicants, uh, maybe if we can contact them, maybe, I don't know if Stacy can get ahold of them this evening, but if we can try to get an interview from them tomorrow. Somehow we should do, it's emergency, so we should try to, uh, you know, interview those five applicants and maybe, uh, make a selection. You know, since we didn't, uh, there's two votes that go the way that, uh, you know, that was brought to us by the task force, so that's my recommendation, I don't know if we could get ahold of them, I think, uh, a couple of them are, are tribal members, the other three, I think, are, you know, that live in different areas, so maybe those are the ones, I'm sure they have, uh, phone numbers that she can get ahold of. If that's a possibility, we could do that tomorrow.
Councilman Weston, and then, uh.
Yeah, so, um, the other one that I was going to recommend, um, is, uh, James Sierra Senior. Uh, and most people know him by J.C. He was a candidate from, uh, the last time this issue came up, and he made the final three. But Mr. Ghost Bear has the floor with his motions, so.
Councilman Ghost Bear.
Um, Chair, you know what? I'll just draw my motion, I mean, I don't know, casino is on its last leg, and it's beyond its last leg, so nobody don't wanna support shutting it down, and I don't know. Either man, cuz I don't know what to do, you guys, I mean, we all sitting here looking at each other, I mean, let's do something. Ah, damn, it's going on six o'clock.
Councilman Steele.
You know, Mr. Ghost Bear, you're not wrong, I'll tell you that. Um, we all sit here and we know the problems and the status of the casino, and I, I honestly don't think that's not a, a bad idea to shut down for a, a little while until we can get a, a real grasp like what some council reps, um, recommended is get the numbers, look at everything, see where our, our expenditures are every day, every week, see what revenue's coming in. I mean, cuz right now we're floating in the air, and we really need a, a, a leader in there that knows finances, and so, you know, I, I don't think that's a bad idea. Because if, if the people understood how bad off this casino is, then they'd understand that, you know, this is something that has to be done. It really does. And I think people are just afraid to second your motion, I'll second it. Cuz it, like I said, right now, the stability of this casino, and if we really wanna save this, this is something that has to happen.
And, and meanwhile, they could bring in all that information too, so, I mean, ASAP.
And do the interviews, see if you can get them done tomorrow.
So is that, you, did, did you wanna continue your motion, or?
I mean, yeah, I'll make that motion, I just is, I don't know, just, we're ready to move on.
I'll second it, man.
All right, well, okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Ghost Bear, second by, uh, Councilman Steele.
Good question, it's a, um, urgent question to this matter here, um, if Prairie Wind gets shut down, then we need to, to see if that's gonna shut the, um, East Wind Casino servers down. So that, we, we need to look at that, I mean, cuz if it does, then that's gonna have a ripple effect on East Winds.
It does, I think, I believe. Cuz that's where the machines come from, right?
Yep.
So I, I think that's, we have to look at that, that. Go ahead, Councilman Dillon.
The, the thing about it is surveillance goes to, the computers all go down, if one shuts down, the other one shuts down. And they're tied together, so we can't shut Prairie Winds down completely, because if we do, we shut down East Winds automatically. They are tied together.
Councilman Steele.
Um, I, I don't think we need a full shutdown, but I think what we're talking about is closing the doors, and maybe have the appropriate, um, staff that's available to make sure to, to ensure that East Wind stays open and operating. Um, because right now, and then it's not just, like we said, finances, it's the safety of our customers out there. And maybe with this temporary, um, shutdown, we can even look at the process of moving into the tent. But I, I think, um, it, it won't be a full shutdown, but it'll just be like closing the doors and just having the necessary, um, workers to, to ensure East Wind stays open.
Go ahead.
Uh, I think that tomorrow, I think, uh, Stacy's going to email us out the updated finances from the comptroller from the casino, so that we will have a better idea of what we're looking at, but but I think we should also see about getting these, uh, applicants interviewed right away and see if we can, uh, appoint someone in there right away. So I don't know how soon Stacy can do that with the three applicants that live off reservation, we got two that live here. But we still need to look at our finances, so.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, the, the, the resolution was just a temporary, it was a day or two day or three day to have a body in that position, so we can, um, continue to keep that open until we get this position filled, and that they couldn't do any more damage than what is, what, you know, what in the situation it is now, I mean, so I don't, I don't see why, you know, that's, we could have looked at that, um, just, just to keep the doors open.
Councilman Randall.
Why can, why can't we just hold off till they end it, where our, the cycle of council meeting, that's two more days? Yeah, a couple of days, and then it's been, like you all said, it's been a while since, uh, this has been going down a road, but don't take action count Thursday or so.
Councilman Ghost Bear.
Chair, Chair, we made that motion just to shut it down temporary, it's just, like I said, maybe a few days till we get them applicants here. Um, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do the due diligence, get our finances here, Garf over there had a good, good idea, he said that, that, let's keep the people on, I need to be on at Prairie Wind, so we ensure that East Winds don't close, um, I guess, that was our motion, he seconded, but if somebody else has a better motion, then Chair, I mean, just run it, and if it don't pass, then somebody else can make a motion, so.
Yeah, we need to run the motion, uh. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Londonman.
Thank you, Chair, you know, when I hear shut it down, you know, I, 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 I think of employees, I think of the families. You know, I don't think that, I think it's drastic to just shut it down and, and you know, have all at once tell employees, you know, we're shut down. You know, I think there needs to be a, a, a prior notice if we're looking that way, but you know, to make a decision like that, I think we need to really have that assessment done, you know, see where we're at. And we're all aware of, you know, that it's in tough shape out there, but, you know, we need, we need that assessment done. And so, with that being said, Chair, I mean, if you wanna run the motion, run the motion, but you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a vote against it at this time, because like I said, we need an assessment done. So, thank you.
Councilman Sears.
You know, I think, um, we have managers for all of the departments, and why do we need the general manager, is it a compact thing, or is it something we can do without for a couple of days? You know, you got managers already. And also, you know, what's, we should have a plan before we close the doors. We got employees out there wondering what we're doing, and we said we was gonna come out and tell them what happened. That's why we have to take these actions, cuz our public don't know that either.
Chair, this is a drama motion, somebody else make one.
Councilman Spotted Bear.
Um, well, the motion is withdrawn, and I was just gonna state that, uh, general manager is required, uh, for the, for the compact, uh, case somebody hits a jackpot, the general manager has to sign off or has to be present for that. And if you're requesting a, a couple of days, again, I mean, communication is key when we're requesting something. Um, and that was an address when you're talking about asking for Mr. Tenfingers, if that's your request to put him in there for a few days versus a long term, that makes a difference. Um, and if you, if you're wanting to, I would support that, a few days versus a long term, uh, a long term, because I know I wouldn't know in exa- in committee, and I wouldn't know today, but if you're asking just for a few days until we can get that in order to get, get, um, our financials in order, I would support that. But I was under the impression that he was gonna be there for a few months, um, until we can get everything in order.
They're just a few days.
Councilman Steele.
You know, that wasn't the discussion in committee. The discussion was to appoint this guy for a long time and keep that general manager position off of being interviewed. That's what was told to me in committee, and that's why I didn't support it. Now to s- come on, come onto the council floor and say, oh, it's for one or two days or for a few hours? You know, that's, that's not what the discussion was when you guys passed this resolution. So let's, let's, let's be real. And, and I know we're gonna pull out the heartstrings and the violins and talk about, about families losing jobs, one of, but seriously, it's gonna happen if we don't get a grasp of this mess we're in. And it will be permanently. What we're talking about is something temporarily that will save these jobs for these families. But then we pull these heartstrings out and start playing this violin, and it scares everyone from voting. I mean, let's be real here. So the discussion in committee wasn't to appoint this guy for a few days. It was to appoint him and, and until we figured out this whole mess with the casino and got out of this mess possibly, and to move into the, the tent, and that, that would've took a long time. So it wasn't for just a few days. Now, that kinda upsets me when we do that.
Councilman Randall.
No, mine is, uh, just work our way through this, continue with the council meeting and do some of this other stuff when the interviews and the, the process, and we can come back to it before we, uh, by Thursday or Friday, whenever we finish our council meeting.
Councilman Londonman.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so you know, we need a general manager temporarily, in, in the emergency meeting yesterday, it said temporarily put in Jackson Tenfingers. So on here, on this resolution, if our, if our legal over here can amend it to where it says temporarily appoint Jackson Tenfingers to the position of acting general manager for the Prairie Wind Casino, if you could add that, then I'll motion to, 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 to put Jackson in there temporarily, Jackson Tenfingers. So if you can, that's my motion, if you could add that, if I get a second, okay? Got a second, if we could run, if it passes, good, if not, then that's it. We need somebody in there temporarily, that's the bottom line. Temporarily.
Second by Councilman Randall? Okay. Secretary, call for the vote. Was that with, uh, with, uh, Councilman Cross was talking about temporarily, what, what are we talking?
While, while in here on the resolution, it doesn't state temporarily, temporary putting him in there, it just says appointing, so if you could add temporary appointing, then that's what I want. And that's my motion, to temporarily put him in there until further notice. Until further notice. While we can't put a timeline on how long it's gonna take, that's why I'm saying. We want it done ASAP, but we need an assessment, we need, we want all these things, but it takes time to do all those things, so.
So until filed?
Yeah, and, until filed, that's gonna be my motion, or no, until further notice. And then once later on down the road, then we could decide, okay, our, we have, uh, enough applicants for the position, and we can move forward from there, but until, until further notice.
Good. Councilman Weston.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, um, if we could entertain a little bit of time for one of the supervisors from the casino, she would like to, uh, make a comment here. So I'd like to give the floor to her if it was possible.
Well, we have a, a most second on the floor here. Um, go ahead, I'm, I'm gonna allow it, uh, just if you can be brief, so we can. Go ahead, Councilman Weston.
Hello, Tribal Council, um, my name's Latonya Ekofi, and I'm the slot manager at Prairie Wind Casino. Um, I've been employed there since 2009. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath, I ran in here as fast as I could, but, um, I think I heard all the questions that you, that you guys had and your concerns on the way out. Um, as far as East Wind Casino, um, their servers, they're not connected to Prairie Wind Casino. So their gaming machines will still be able to operate without the casino, without Prairie Wind Casino, um. But a lot of Prairie Wind Casino staff does a lot for East Wind Casino when it comes to their payroll, accounts payable, um, surveillance, auditing, gaming inspectors, um, IT, and all, all of that's paid under Prairie Wind Casino. East Wind doesn't pay any of them employees. Um, and I heard Miss Spotted Bear say that, um, the casino can't operate without a general manager because when it comes to paying out jackpots, um, that's not true. All we need is a shift manager in order to pay out them jackpots. They have authority to sign off on the jackpot checks, and so we don't need a general manager because of jackpots. Um, it is very concerning, the financial situation at the casino. Um, it's stressful. Every day to go to work, it's, it's stressful. Every day to go to work, it's, it's stressful. Some days you don't even wanna open your emails. Um, but if you do decide to close down to the casino, that's another 163 families that's gonna be asking for assistance. Um, ultimately, it's your guys' choice. I just kinda wanted to fill you guys in on some of the things you wasn't too um, informed on. Um, but other than that, um, I just want, wanna let you guys know that.
Yeah, uh, but before we go on any further, I think we should be an executive to hear her out. Just.
Motion to go an executive.
Just based on some of the, some information that shouldn't, probably should be confidential. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Halverson. Do I have a second? Yes, I, I, I know, but I, I would like to. We need to resolve some things. And I, and I wanna hear what suggestions we have. We also have to listen to our employees. Cuz they're the ones that work there. And I'd like to hear what they have to say as employees. So we have a second? Councilman Randall? Secretary, call for the vote? Randall?
James Cross. Blaine Littlethunder.
Yes.
David Kelly. Dunry, pardon. Bold Little White Man. Lio Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Craig Dillon? Garfield Steele? Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumpiniggle Senior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Sure.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Uh, George Dreamer Junior?
Okay.
Ten, yes. Eight, no. Two not voting. Motion carried. Or one not voting, I'm sorry. Motion carried. We're going executive 557?